Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorak.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Alderman Gale is excused. Alderman Guzekowski.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a veteran in the audience? Greg, would you lead us?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully you all had a chance to look at your minutes, or if there's any questions or comments, if not, a motion.
Kelski, make a motion to approve the minutes of July 18th, 2017.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorak.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
We have one council proclamation to consider. It is to Carolyn Cobb for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Board of Review. At this time, I'll have Krista Miller read it for us.
Council proclamation number 17-10 to Caroline Cobb for the dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Board of Review. Whereas Caroline Cobb was appointed to the Board of Review on June 16th, 2000, and has served on that board for 17 years. And whereas Caroline Cobb also served the city and citizens of Oak Creek for 15 years as an election official from 1998 through 2013. And whereas Caroline Cobb has resigned from the Board of Review effective July 18th, 2017. And whereas Caroline Cobb, through these appointments, has served the city in a thorough conscientious and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Caroline Cobb for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Board of Review. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be... and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Caroline Cobb, introduced and adopted this 31st day of July 2017.
Thank you. Motion, please.
Kelski, make a motion to adopt council proclamation number 17-10 to Caroline Cobb, dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Board of Review.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorak.
Aye.
Before we move on to the public hearing, I would just like to acknowledge our fire department. We have Chief Rosendich with us and Battalion Chief Johnson. Last week, our fire department got the international fire accreditation. Very coveted within the fire industry. There's only under 300 of them, I think nationwide, they got it. You'll hear more about it at future meetings, but we'd like to congratulate you on your hard work for continuous improvement. And you represented the city well. Thank you very much. Public hearings. First one is a request by Aaron Fisher, Laser Tag Pro, to amend the conditional use permit for an outdoor commercial recreation facility on the properties located at 9,091 South Nicholson Road. Who do we have with us? Is that you, Carrie? Are you taking it?
I am here representing...
Oh, I'm sorry. We gotta read the public hearing. I blew it.
Yes.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Aaron Fisher, Laser Tag Pro, to amend the conditional use permit for an outdoor commercial recreation facility on the properties located at 9,091 South Nicholson Road. The applicant is Aaron Fisher. The property owner is Revived Industries LLC. Therefore, follows the legal description and the date of the notice is July 6th, 2017.
Thank you, Krista. Now, I think we got Carrie on.
Thank you. I am here to provide any information and to answer any questions on the proposed use. This is an amendment to an existing conditional use for the properties. You may know that the Plan Commission had previously reviewed the properties for an indoor recreational facility for Laser Tag Pro, and that ordinance was also passed by the Common Council. And this amendment is to add outdoor recreation to that conditional use approval. The one thing that I'd like to draw your attention to was there was significant discussion regarding the proposed hours of operation for the outdoor component. And with... after that considerable discussion, the hours were amended for Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the indoor recreation. And then outdoor recreation would be daily from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So if there are any questions with regard to those hours, I'd be happy to try and clarify and provide some more information as to what the thought process was for those proposed hours. Some of the items that they were considering for outdoor recreation are the Laser Tag Arena, basically just an outdoor playfield. Some other items that they may do in the future would be things like a ropes course. They were thinking about sports courts, such as basketball, what they call an adventure course or ninja course, what they call big game hunt, which was basically targets that you would shoot at. There would be requirements for this, for any of those proposed outdoor activities, to go back to the Plan Commission, for site and building plan approval for any type of structures, and for the layout of the property itself. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but the recommendation is for approval of ordinance 2861 for the outdoor recreation use.
Thank you, Carrie. As it says, a public hearing will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address. We will now make the first call.
Ron Grundy, 9160 Nicholson. Our residents is probably most, would be mostly impacted by the Laser Tag Pro, whatever they're doing over there. When I first came up here, this was a year or so ago, they talked about they were only going to do indoor. They were going to have indoor, and you folks went along with that indoor type of thing. And now they're talking about outdoor. And that type of recreation, at that time, I was opposed to it. I am still opposed to people shooting at each other, whether it's clay, or, you know, laser, or paintballs, or anything of that sort with weapon types things. But, you know, people do that stuff that I understand. I'm not, you know... But the hours of operation, that's probably our biggest concern. They're talking about weekends till nine o'clock on Sunday night. That's, you know, to me, even the Boxhorn Trap League where they shoot out their clay targets, they stop in the afternoon on Sundays and Saturdays in the afternoon. You know, you have weekends there. What they're doing, and then the other thing, we were at the planning meeting, and they talk about things like big game hunting, you know, they're going to be doing that in a certain area. Well, I didn't see any plans for that stuff. And I know when people come to the council to build some of these buildings around here, the architects lay out the plans, they show different types of materials they're using, they show all of the plans they have. They talk big game hunting. What does that mean? Elephants standing out there? Is that, are they going to shoot at that? What's going on? I didn't see any type of plans. They didn't have any real solid plans. Are they gonna make silhouettes out of, you know, plywood, or are they gonna have animals out? I don't know. You know, nobody seems to know exactly what they're doing. They explain that they're going to be shooting the lasers, and it, you know, they light up a target from what I understand. When somebody has it on their chest, it lights up. So in the wintertime, or on the weekends, late at night, you're gonna see light flashes around, from what I understand. So we have, you know, pretty much objections to the hours, you know, to that type of activity. You know, and basically, that's about all I can say. I don't, I've never experienced the game myself, but I know people that have said it can be annoying with the flashes of lights and stuff like that. So we're concerned with that. And even if they did proceed with something like that, if it was throttled down, see how it is. And if it's working out, there's no complaints, then maybe they could come back. But I think the council really needs to have a firm plan, you know, of just exactly what's gonna go on there. Are they gonna, you know, I heard things like they're gonna take airplane fuselages, and they'd be running back and forth through there, and stuff like that. So, you know, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now make the second call.
Carol Grundy, 9160 South Nicholson Road. I live in the same house with Ron right there. And I invited everybody to come over to my backyard and take a look, but nobody came, not that I know of, anyway, to take a look at just how close we are to that fence where they're gonna be playing on the other side of. I don't want to see anything that, you know, just obstructs my peaceful, quiet life that I have there. And I don't want people running around, you know, hearing them. I don't, I don't want to have any, I don't want to see them at all. If they're there, I don't want to see them, I don't want to hear them, and I don't want any noise. And I don't want them there that late at night. I mean, you guys gotta fix this, so that it's not annoying. There's three of us. My neighbor next door is working, so she can't be here. And the couple next to them, we talked to them, I don't know, he's your, he's your, the fellow who assesses all the homes in Oak Creek. Mark, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, maybe he doesn't care, I don't know. But his backyard is there too, and they use it a lot. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carol.
I'd just like to add one thing to the, to the, what we're looking at here. The last people that were in there, the green man, we had a real wrestling match there. They were required to hook up to municipal sewer. When municipal sewer is available, we have to hook up to it. And they gave them a certain amount of time to hook up to the sewer. They never did. Now, you know, if there's, whatever the amount of people that are gonna be back there doing whatever they're doing, I would say that they probably need municipal sewer. I don't want somebody standing behind a tree, you know, they gotta have the facilities. And I don't know if, you know, the, if that property has been looked at for the facilities that would handle that type of thing. So that's another concern we have.
Thank you. Third and final call. Please name and address.
Joe McGeorge, 9100 South Nicholson Road, Oak Creek. I actually work at the property. We've been before you guys in the past. And I just, I just wanted to provide some information and, you know, let you guys know a little bit what we're doing, what our plans are. Because, you know, I understand Ron, and I know you guys have some concerns. But what we're trying to do at this property, you know, as a foreclosure property, I know it's had issues. I know why people have these concerns. But we're trying to make a really high-quality, fun, family entertainment center here, you know. We've already spent hundreds of thou, you know, over $100,000 just getting the property in better shape. We actually, just out of the Plan Commission meeting, we brought on a full-time grounds and maintenance person that's basically there to work on the property. Okay, so, you know, I know there's some houses that, you know, you can see on the picture, I think you guys can see at least. There's some houses just off to the southwest there. There actually is a row of trees, vegetation in between that. But as far as the hours of operation are concerned, you know, in the first Plan Commission meeting, we did, you know, apply for indoor, but the reason for that was we also, there was no outdoor written into the code for M1 Properties. Okay, so we actually concurrently applied to have that code change in the zone. That was approved. So, you know, and we actually did specify some of the, like a phase two of the property in our initial planning, just to let you guys know, that's what we were thinking about doing with the property. That's why we bought 13 acres in the first place, so we can make something like this. So, you know, we have every intention to be respectful of our neighbors, you know. We're not gonna have people being wild right across their property. I mean, it's not like that. In fact, the majority of the activity and the way we've laid this out is to the east and really to the north. Couple of things, you know, we thought, you can see where we kind of placed the big game hunt. That's really meant to be for like younger people who can't play in the outdoor playfield. They can still participate. Maybe they can go there with their dad or their mom, you know, and it's basically just kind of a little like target shooting thing. Very benign type activity. It's actually a lot of fun. Guys should come play. So, you know, I really like to put those fears to rest because, you know, we really want to do something good for the city here and make something very unique. There's really nothing else in Wisconsin, or really very little in the Midwest that is gonna do something that we're doing here, at least to this level. So, you know, we're very interested in making something high-quality. It has to be that way, or people won't want to come. I mean, it's intrinsically, it has to be that way. So, you know, we actually are the manufacturer of the equipment. We need to be a good representative. When people come and they want to buy our equipment, you know, we've sold this equipment into over 25 countries. We need to show them and like give them vision for what they can make, you know. And these are people that are looking also at making a million-dollar investment wherever they live, you know. It has to be done well. So, you know, I know there's a concern, a little bit of concern on the outdoor with the hours, but this is evening activity too. People come and play this in the evening, just like you'd go play volleyball, or play baseball, or whatever sport it is. People do their family entertainment on the weekends and the evenings. And that's really the purpose of that change. So, wintertime really isn't that much of a concern, because people aren't gonna be playing in like their snow gear. You know what I mean? They're not gonna be out there on the playfield and stuff like that. So it's more seasonal for the outdoor. But, you know, we're really working on this. We're really making large investments in what we're doing here. And we really want you guys to know that, just as the council of the city. So, there was a comment made about the sewer. We actually had all of that, the whole mound system there checked out. I know there was some provision, you know, wanting us eventually to hook up to city sewer. Apparently, there's like a 3,600-gallon tank on property there, so it's significant size. We just had all that cleaned out, a bunch of maintenance done. It was, you know, we spent 2,500 bucks just, just for the mound system there to get it in working, good working condition. So, you know, you guys can trust us with this. We're gonna keep working with our neighbors here. And I just wanted to say that tonight, so you guys know where we're going with this project.
Thank you. He was part of the third and final call. Seeing none others, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the consideration of ordinance 2861 approving an amendment to the conditional use permit for the properties at 9,091 South Nicholson Road for the operation of a private outdoor recreation facility. Questions from the council?
Comments? This is in my district. And actually, I did reach out to five of the neighbors that were closest to the proposed development. Met with Ron and Carol as well. And one other neighbor did agree to meet with me, and we, you know, just shared some information, the limited amount of information that was available in regard to the project at that time. That was probably one or two planning meetings ago. Certainly, the residents have concerns about the project, those that are, that are closest to the southwest border of the site plan. I did visit Ron and Carol at their home. Yeah, they're, they're close, 100 feet. So certainly, they have concerns about noise, lighting, obstacle placement. I mean, because of the lack of information, you know, and I guess that will be upcoming in future planning meetings.
To be clear, every time they'd add something, whether it's big game, or outdoor green patio space, sports courts, they are coming back through planning. So each phase of this, basically, you get a kick at the can, depending on what they bring in. So keep in mind, you know, whether it's lighting regards, what have you, it all has to run through our inspection process and our, and through planning.
Okay. And I had given Ron and Carol assurances that the council would take into consideration any of the residents in the nearby area, their best interests, as it, you know, relates to noise, lighting, again, the placement of obstacles, towers. Just the lack of information causes some concern. And I'm sure this will probably be a much smoother process, once there's more information available about what it actually is that they're planning to do in some of those areas. We've heard discussions about the 20-foot light towers? Where that came from? I have no idea. Empty airplane fuselage, abandoned cars, as part of one of the playfields. So I guess, once we get information from, from the developer as to what their plans actually are, you know, we can proceed in a, probably a far more productive manner for you and for the residents in the area. It's pretty easy to say, you know, "Trust me, we're going to do this." I think a lot of us have already heard that a number of times, both in the council or as residents ourselves. So just having those details available at the next planning meeting and for neighborhood review would probably be very helpful as well. You know, so just to alleviate concerns, that lack of information is probably what's scaring them the most about this development. Honestly, it sounds as though this thing is gonna be outstanding, but without additional details, okay, you know, what actually is going to happen there? So the neighbors have concerns. Light towers that may shine into their yards. I know there hasn't been a lighting plan that's been submitted yet, but I guess we give assurances that that is a process or step that has to take place. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So certainly, I don't think that both the Planning Commission or the Common Council would, would approve a development that, you know, wouldn't fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. And Ron and Carol, you know that you'll be part of that process every step of the way by appearing at Common Council meetings and appearing at the Planning Commission meetings as well. There's, I think we alleviated some of those concerns, you know, about the, again, of the abandoned cars as, as part of that. I don't know if that's something that the Planning Commission would even consider or approve. Or screening those types of obstacles on your courses from resident view. So a lot of things that needed to take place, but certainly a lot of additional details in the site plan that, you know, will have to be reviewed by planning and the council. And hopefully, will ease a lot of the resident concerns about that development.
Thank you, Rich. Steve?
Rich, I don't know if that, if you were hinting at perhaps asking this item to be held. If you were, then I would agree, because having played Laser Tag and having had a laser sight on a handgun, I would, it's my imagination perhaps running amok here, but I know that those beams go quite the distance. So my first concern was the fact that there's a fence going around the property. Is it, is the type of fence that's going to be high enough and made so that it...
First of all, let him explain. This isn't a typical beam like you see, a pointer.
And honestly, yeah, thanks. That was a, it's a little bit of confusion on this at, even at the Plan Commission meeting. So let me see if I can clear this up.
Joe, can you repeat your name?
I'm sorry. It's Joe McGeorge, 9100 South Nicholson Road, Oak Creek.
Thank you.
So, it's a little confusing, okay. It is, we use a Class 1 laser, which has an FDA accession number, okay. It's completely safe. Class 1, you can look it up, just look on FDA, Class 1. It's meant to be a completely... Those laser pointers that you're talking about, that's a focus, focus beam of visible light. Like, the purpose of that is to hone the light in to like a very tight beam, so, you know, and then you play with the cats or whatever people do with those. Usually, those start at least at Class 2, okay, and they go from there. We can't make any kind of laser that's harmful. People shoot this at each other. So like, it's meant to be a game, you know. That's what Laser Tag is. It's been done for 30 years, and it's always been done with this technology. So, there is no focus, really like focus beam of light, because when you, you know, you use the tagger and you, you know, pull the trigger on it, what happens is it sends that beam out, but it passes through a lens. It's about a, I don't know what it is, 30-millimeter lens or something like that. And that disperses the beam, okay. So by the time it gets 50 feet away, the size of that light that came out is this big. So if you think about it as like a vis, the same as visible light, it would just look kind of like a focused flashlight. I don't know if you've ever seen something like that before. So, even aside from that, and the concerns regarding lasers, okay, it's very safe, okay. The, it's an infrared light. So you can't, our eyes can't even perceive it. It's like, if you could look at it with a heat camera, have you ever seen that before? You know, TV or something like that. They, they use like a camera that actually can see the heat differences, okay. That's what infrared light is. It's basically, it's a different part of the electromagnetic spectrum that we can't see, okay. We can only see the visible light, all right. So you can't see that portion of light even. So if you have this concern of like, you know, the shots like hitting somebody's house, you wouldn't be able to see it anyway. I mean, we can bring a sample. If you guys want to see, you know, what that even means. When you push the button, you don't see anything, okay. The only thing you see are, there are, there is an LED also in there that kind of makes a little flash, but it doesn't shine on anything. You really can only see it as if you look directly at it, okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't flash like a flashlight. It's like, like a simple one LED kind of thing.
Joe, you described it, planning as a TV remote control.
And that's pretty much what it is. That's actually, I forgot I said that. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. It is, a TV remote control is an infrared beam, okay. So think of it as that way. When you change a channel, it's sending an infrared beam to your TV that has information writing on it, and that's what changes the channel. Okay, so it's the same principle.
Joe, you just, you just brought up about providing or scheduling a demonstration.
Sure.
Again, just the unknown is probably what is fearful to most of the residents in the area. That would probably go a long way. That'd be a great first step, is to arrange a demonstration. Because I have no idea what that is either.
Sure.
Or what it would look like. And if it is, as you say, I think that would be proof to the residents that, yeah, that's not going to be very invasive to them. So...
Yeah, and as far as like light, lighting, making it to those houses, there's lots of vegetation there. And we're gonna have, you know, where we're making the playfield right in the middle, I mean, you have to make stuff for people to hide behind, right, when they're playing. So it's very unlikely there'd be, you know, a lot of light passing in that direction. So, you know, that's valid critique, you know. The thing is, this is a 13-acre property. We just bought it in October. We're making the plans right now, but we're trying to really be prudent about the process that we're taking there.
Sure.
You know, be respectful of the city and everybody. Make sure they know what we're doing here. So, you know, it's, I just, I hope, does anybody have questions on, on the lighter, the laser?
Steve, you're still, you're still at the floor technically, Steve.
Yeah, I do. Does that make sense, or?
Well, it makes sense. And back to the imagination running amok, then you've explained it to me. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
There any FAA issues with this?
There is, and I brought, that came up at the last meeting. I am actually a certified commercial pilot and flight instructor, so I'm intimately familiar with lasers and their dangers to pilots. Those types of lasers, it's actually illegal to have those kind people modify them and things like that. And the types of lasers that they're talking about are, I don't even know what class they are. But that's a tightly focused, that's like a laser that could start a, you know, fire if you, those lasers that they're talking about, that are dangerous for aviation purposes. This is, it's essentially a benign laser. It's, you know, as far as certification purposes, you know, we've, it's really just, you know, it's essentially a harmless beam. So it's very, as far as even lasers are classified, there's LEDs that have more power than the laser that we use, okay. Simple LEDs.
Joe, is that a, is that a yes or a no? Is there an FAA issue with this?
No, no. And Joe, you brought that up at the last Planning Commission meeting, didn't you? Do you have some documentation from Mitchell Field or the FAA that, that your equipment is not a problem or a threat to the airport?
You know, I didn't, I haven't retrieved any, you know, I was gonna pull the regulation on it. We've actually been out of town for some other purposes for the last few weeks here. So I haven't retrieved what, you know, I'm gonna have to retrieve the regulatory standard for lasers. But essentially, you know, the concern is with this, people using high-powered focused lasers and shining them in the cockpits on landing that can temporarily blind a pilot. But, you know, upon... But, you know, upon landing, that's, you know, very illegal to do that. So ours is not even close to the same class as something like that. And we're really talking about two entirely different things.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it, Steve?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Are we dealing tonight with any of these possibilities on the outdoor, the motorized cart?
That would come back to planning as they plan out each activity.
Okay.
Correct, because right now it's just conditional use to allow the outdoor.
Outside, right.
Play area, correct, Carrie?
Yeah, that's correct. This is more of, this is a plant, like a master plan, if you think about it that way. These are things that could happen here, wishlist if you will. But anything that gets planned for the property, those detailed plans have to go back through the plan commission for everything. For landscaping, for screening, for lighting, for all the structures.
Chris, anything?
I have just a little bit more. Joe, this sounds like it's going to be a many-step process for you. And I don't think that, you know, we as a council or even the planning commission want to get in your way for developing a new and what sounds like an exciting business in our community, but we just have to be smart with, with, you know, any new development that takes place. And I just lost where I was going. Forgive me, I lost where I was going with that.
So let me just say, you know, going through the plan commission, like Carrie said, you know, the idea is to give you guys a vision for what we're making. And we know that, you know, when we make these things, when we put these modules together, like it, we've really just sectioned it out. The plan or what we're building is not complete yet, you know? The, like the model or the top-down view of what this is going to be for a lot of these different modules on the property is not complete yet. And that's what we'll bring to the plan commission. When those things are ready, we'll, we'll bring them for these modules. We may do it, you know, in groups. We kind of haven't sectioned off like we're going to start with this one, then this one, then this one. It sort of just depends.
Okay, so Joe, and just by you mentioning that, I did recall my question, a many-step process. Do you have a timeline for this? I mean, could this take months, years?
Yeah, so.
What would you ideally like to?
We, so what we know we want to begin with is the initial, like the main area in the middle of the outdoor playfield. You know, that's, that's our bread and butter, you know what I mean? So we want to try to finish this indoor and then we want to move to the outdoor. So people, when they come, at least we're starting as, you know, a full-on indoor/outdoor laser tag facility. They could pick which field they want to play on and, you know, that's kind of where we're going to start it here. There's other things like the courts, like the, some of the areas of the pavement need to be redone. You know, I think it's going to take some time and a lot of money, honestly, so. So, you know, we're, like I said, we're, you know, it's not one of these like, oh, we built all this property. Do you guys like it, you know, come for approval? We're trying to take the correct steps here. This is actually our first property that we've owned, you know, we've done this in the past. We've leased property and things like that in Greenfield. So we're really just trying to do it right, you know what I mean?
Do you have an idea when you think you might come back to planning with some of the initial site plans for the outdoor activity?
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't have the plan yet, so I wouldn't say a certain time. You know, like, like Carrie said, this is sort of the master plan and we're just sort of setting the stage to add each one.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just give you a rehash at planning. We went round and round with this at planning for a long time, a better, better part of an hour on a public hearing. Learned a lot about this, I was not familiar with it. My vision was, it was like a laser pointer. Turns out it's more like a TV remote control that hits reflector and identifies you as being tagged. After we got over that, some of the commissioners say their, their children play it, it's harmless, they're running around the house with it. We're not condoning the use of running around with guns, different use for it. Again, this is a master plan, that's the thing you really have to digest. It's a master plan, they're going to come back in for approvals on the individual pieces of it, depending on how they move financially. Regarding going out to the property, I did visit the property, I did not go into the property. I pretty much walked that fence line and out to the trees there by the office, party room. Again, the screening, the vegetation, it's there now. We kind of hashed this through, that may never even end up there. But again, we can't have stray light, inspections will take care of that. The property does need some work, so I'm glad to hear that you hired somebody because the fence looked terrible with those sheets hanging and what have you, the property needs some attention. The other thing, I really won't get into it with facilities, but that's an inspection thing from us. Why they're not hooked up to sewer and why Green Man didn't do it, I don't know. Green Man's not on trial here or anything, but if it passed inspection, okay, that's an inspection thing. So as long as they can accommodate everything safely with the environmental health and everything like that, we're good. So again, different use of the property, kind of unique, may not be everybody's cup of tea, but it is a different time and a different place. So I just want you to understand how the property will evolve and that this will all be sorted out as they come through.
Okay.
So, anything else? If not, move to a motion.
Okay.
On up, Carol.
Carol Grundy, how can you approve something that they don't have a plan for and you don't know what you're approving?
It's conceptual.
But that means if you don't have a plan and I can't look at this whole plan for the whole layout.
It's conceptual, so when they have the plan, they have to come right back through the process from planning to council.
That means I have to come back and watch for every meeting that comes up and make sure that we come back and take a look at it.
You will be notified because you're within 300 feet of the property, Carol. That's our ordinance.
But if you're approving this without the real plan, then that means I have to have spent sleepless nights worrying about this for the next whatever.
We're sorry to put you through that, but we can do that because this plan may not, he may reverse this whole thing. You may have nothing by you. He may never develop that, it's conceptual. Depending on what the need is with his business is what's going to determine what he puts where.
Well, if he's so experienced in this, wouldn't he know that? And?
Again, he's not experienced with this property, so he has to see what the market is here in the Oak Creek area for it.
When you approve a house or a residence coming in somewhere, don't you, people look at the plans that are going to, how many houses they're going to put there? How many this they're going to?
We just did a subdivision plot across from your house, okay? Those lots are subject to change. Now, that's a plot and it's going to change. Things are going to move around there depending on wetland delineations. And some of the lots are going to have homes, some may not, some of the outlots may get homes. So again, no different there, it's, in a sense, it's still conceptual.
And why hasn't he brought you a sample of this laser so you guys can see it?
I have no answer for that. I think, at least in my view, and based on talking to the commissioners that have experience with this, I was satisfied with their explanation as to what it is and the people I've talked to.
You have to be positively certain about this laser thing. And why doesn't he bring a sample? Why doesn't he get approval from the FAA that this is okay? So you have something to lean on, so I won't have to come and sue you later. Not that I would want to do that.
No, I wouldn't want you to either.
But, I mean, if you're going to destroy my whole home life there, I mean, I'm not going to let you do that.
We're really trying to work with you to not destroy your life here.
Good.
We're trying to have him be a respectful neighbor.
Good, thank you.
Motion.
Well, Joe, I mean, it can't be any worse than what it is out there right now. As, as the mayor did, that's a rough-looking property right now. So, you know, we're very hopeful that with steps that you're going to take will lead to a significant improvement, you know, in that property and that area. So with that being said, Duke Niack moved that the common council adopts ordinance number 2861, approving the amendment to the conditional use permit for the properties at 9,09100 South Nicholson Road for the operation of private outdoor recreation facilities.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Good luck, and remember, please, work with your neighbors.
Yeah.
If at all possible, take some time and please bring us some samples and, and cover your bases with FAA. And if you can get us that information too, we'd appreciate that, that we all want to be good neighbors and.
Yeah, Joe, we can work together on, on setting up a meeting with the neighbors to really ease or calm their concerns. And I'd be happy to work with you or help you with that, yep.
All right. Treasurers report, Barb.
Good evening. I've got actual, actually I have reports for May and June investments and banking and investments included in this report because there was no July, first meeting in July. I'm just going to do those together. The council report only highlights the June numbers since I usually give you beginning and end numbers. So I'll just go through those real quickly. Beginning balance in, for June was just over 36 million. Ending balance, just over 33 million. Tax collection of about 740,000. We made a payment out to the other taxing jurisdictions for April and May tax collections in June of about 3.1 million. I guess that's about it, if you have any questions?
That was easy, Barb.
That was easy, thanks.
Item number eight, consider a motion to concur with the celebrations and designate Sunday, October 29th, 2017, from 4:00 to 6:00 as the official Oak Creek trick-or-treat. Open for discussion or questions from council. Steve?
Mayor, I'm assuming that this is a return to the Sunday trick-or-treating versus the, what we did last year?
It's my understanding it is, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but from all indications I've heard, it's back to Sunday.
For the record, there was, there was a lot of, let's move it to the traditional night of trick-or-treating. And we tried it last year and I just received all kinds of complaints about that. They really, they really liked Sunday. Greg, do you have something?
That was my question, if there was complaints about the move to Halloween.
Anyone else, Mike?
Oh, that's, that's typical every year. It don't care what date you pick or what time you pick, you're going to get phone calls.
Yeah, well, you know, we got enough where we tried it, I think.
I hear you, I hear you.
Yeah, and I think.
Last year it happened to be on Saturday, so that was the draw to have, give it a shot on the weekend because of that, but.
No other discussion, motion.
Kirkowski make a motion to concur with the celebrations commission and designate Sunday, October 29th, 2017, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM as the official city of Oak Creek trick-or-treat event, I guess, doesn't.
Kirkowski second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Number nine is consideration to concur with the mayor's reappointments to celebrations and the library board. Any questions? For Melanie Lynseth on celebrations and Karen Ums on the library board, each three-year terms. Seeing none, motion.
Kirkowski make a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointments of Melanie Lynseth, the celebrations, three-year term to expire 7/20, and Karen Ums, library board, three-year term to expire June of 2020.
Oracle second. Thank you, roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And just a point on the last reappointments, both those ladies have been long-term members of each of the commissions. I did call them beforehand, thank them for their time and make sure they wanted to re-up. And they both willingly said yes, so thank them for that when you do see them. Item 10, consider a motion to approve the vendor summary report. In the amount of 200,000, 244,467 dollars and 95 cents. Any questions? We have Bridget here. She came all the way out here, she probably wants a question.
Kirkowski make a motion to approve the vendor summary report in amount of 244,467 dollars, 95 cents.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 11 is to consider a motion to approve the purchase of 32 Motorola APX 6,000 portable radios and associated equipment from Bacon Inc. to improve communication in the field during training and emergency incidents. Chief?
Tom came to this proposal with me and it was kind of a unique proposal. And he explained it to me about the change in radios because we had just purchased these radios in 2013. At that time, we had saved over $100,000 in the cabinet improvement because EF Johnson came in with a lower bid and the whole process, well, not to say you get what you paid for, but we have experienced a few difficulties over the year. And Tom got into the technical side, but we have this opportunity to get back on track. And we met with Andrew to discuss the financial side because internally I had the money to make the purchase, but also come turn around at the end is the sunny communications that offered to buy our EF Johnsons from us. But we're turning this deal actually kind of into a profit if you approve this tonight. So, and be in full transparency. But I think it's worth it tonight to let Tom explain some of the technical side and some of the field problems we've had with the EF Johnsons. And because I'm not out there every day in the streets like he is.
Try to summarize, I'll keep it as short as possible, so. I know, Andrew, you didn't like the technical side of things, so I'm not a technical guy, but I'll do the best I can. Yeah, back in 2013 is when we purchased these EFJ radios. Reason for the purchase was is the county is moving to, it's a digital system, it's called P25. It's an all-digital rather than analog system. Radios that we had at the time, most of them were analog. We had a few digital or capable radios of being programmed as digital in our system, but not that many of them. The purchase for the EFJs was to get us to a system that could be upgraded to a digital system. It's a format that we needed to have in place in order to move forward with the county initiative that they have going on. So that's why we purchased, it's called a dual-banded radio, does 800 megahertz and it also does VHF, which we operate both given certain circumstances. Those are the radios that we had. When we got those radios in and like the chief attested, it was kind of an nth-hour arrangement that EFJ had proposed to us to save some money. We were on board to purchase all the Motorolas along with the police department. Most of the county departments were moving this direction. Motorola had given a kind of a reduced price mass purchase offer out there. So we did get involved with that. We were ready to purchase the Motorolas again, then EFJ came from Viking Communications with this last-minute proposal and saving us several tens of thousands of dollars to move to their equipment. Plus they gave us a five-year warranty, they gave us extra battery, they kind of buttered the pot a little bit. And at the time that the decision was made to move to the EFJ radios, there wasn't really that much time to research their capabilities on a Motorola system. At that time, the chief had asked, is there any reason that we shouldn't do this? We didn't have any information that would tell the chief, no, don't do this. The purchase was made and this was prior to me being involved with the radio systems. And the purchase was made, we purchased those radios for about $180,000 at the time. Through many, many emails, we had the technician come from Dallas who flew up here, you worked with us, Lonnie Anway, worked with us to try to fine-tune these radios to get them to work on the system that Motorola provides for us. What we experienced were in-building coverage issues, we were losing signal, we were losing towers. We couldn't, it's called a bonk. When your radio loses a signal from a tower, you get a bonk, an audible bonk on the radio that tells you that you're either out of range or you don't have the capability to catch a tower to move that signal outside to where you need to get to. That was our biggest issue initially. So the engineers at EFJ actually redesigned an antenna for us specifically to try to help us with that problem because they recognized it as being a problem. We got the antennas, it worked a little bit bigger, a little bit better. Some of the issues were not maybe as apparent. I was getting less complaints from the field and then the complaints started to come in again. We were finding dead spaces, so we got together with the county. The county guys and I took a ride around the county, it's called an ANTRSU system where they run tests back and forth, signal strength to towers. And there were areas where the Motorola's definitely were picking up stronger signal than the EFJs were. So through many years of emails, testing, issues, problems with these radios, we finally got an offer back from Motorola to switch over all of our, they're called the four-meg radios that we had in the system, the old Motorola. radios that we had in the system, the old Motorolas, switching those out for that $400 per radio, which is normally bought a 12 to 1500 dollar radio. That's kind of where we're at today. So we're looking at reducing our quantity of radios from 40 down to 32, which will save in the overall cost with the county payment that we have to make on an annual basis and put Motorolas back in the hands of the people who are using them in the field. And, and hopefully seeing much better results, which, which we are.
So, in, in summary, it's economics and safety.
Right. Questions?
Motorola.
Yes, sir.
They use the same system?
They do. Uh, they are using a similar system. They're on a county system, yes, correct? They're, they're on the same system with us at an 800 megahertz system.
Just from a cost perspective?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know, the contracts aren't all at the same time, but you know, what about citywide? What if we're all in the same type of programs, streets and fire and police? I mean, I don't, I don't know how that all works, but just throwing it out there.
I'm sorry, Chris, are you talking about like an overall purchase of the Motorolas to stay in the same field? Go ahead, Chief.
Uh, Steve Anderson, Chief of Police. Um, this came up a couple of years ago when we looked at WISCOM as a radio system. We did an overall analysis of the city. EF Johnson radios would have worked very well on WISCOM, WISCOM because EF Johnson designed that system. The current 800 megahertz system that we're on with the county is a Motorola radio system. We, our Motorola radios, we did buy them in 2013. We have not had the issues that, um, the fire department has had with the EF Johnson radios. And I know of a police municipality that bought some of the, um, they actually had, went to WISCOM and their Motorolas did not work well on the WISCOM system. The county is going with Motorola and that's where your best bang for your buck and best quality of service is going to be.
Thanks. Anything else? Just one question. Uh, you're going from 40 to 32. Any reason in the reduction? Did we just buy backups or...?
Um, I think it was just an overall purchase when we had talked about, uh, there was 10 radios for the command staff and there was going to be 10 per station. So with the three stations, that came to 40 radios.
Yeah, uh, let me add more to that. Originally, we used to have one radio per person that was, uh, under previous administrations and we used to do more callbacks to, into the station and things like that and that worked at that time. And then, uh, the, this latest one under the EF Johnson program, we dropped it back to the 10 at each station because we still had off-duty response. Well, now we're even more into it and then you can go ahead, Tom, and finish.
And, and Chief, sorry, I think what we've learned over the years and, uh, off-duty response is that we, we don't now normally get as much of anymore. I don't think the quantity of radios is what we need. I think a good serviceable radio that, that works appropriately for them is better and it will staff or give each person on duty that day a radio for themselves.
Yes, that's why you got that accreditation. 你需要some improvement. Good job.
I think we're heading in the right direction for sure.
That's the whole process, continuous improvement.
So, uh, seeing other, if there aren't any other questions, motion.
Kirkowski make a motion that the council approve the purchase of 32 Motorola APX 6000 portable radios and associated equipment from Baycom Inc. to improve communication in the field during training and emergency incidents.
Dukenia second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item number 12 is considered...
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for Boylan Properties Oak Creek LLC for the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue. Carrie, you taking it?
If I could get the screen to project? Got it, good. You may recall that there was a previous CSM that was submitted to council for approval and was approved for this property. This is for the proposed car dealership. Uh, there were some changes that were made between that approval and now after discussions with staff regarding the, particularly the official road pattern as well as the future of that road, uh, extension up to Franklin. Because there are some variables with regard to where that road exactly will be located and the wetlands that are on the property through which the, the road will go, it was determined that the CSM would be best served to only show the official street pattern, but not dedicate that road just now, uh, but have a provision for future dedication once, um, there are plans in place for the actual layout and construction of that, of that road. So the CSM now looks like this. It doesn't contain the wetlands. There will be two lots that are proposed, uh, both of conforming size and dimension and the recommendation is for approval of this. If there are any questions with regard to why those changes were made, I can try and expand upon that. Um, this is not in a Tiff district. If there are any questions about that, um, the CSM does allow for the properties to be developed with a car dealership at this time.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Uh, questions? Comments? Motion.
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11841 dash 073117 approving a certified survey map for Boylan Properties Oak Creek LLC for the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Item 13 is another consideration of a certified survey map for St. Matthew's Parish for the properties at 9261, 9303, 9329 and 9348 R. South Chicago Road. Carrie?
Proposal is to combine a couple of the properties with the existing church and, uh, school properties that St. Matthew's owns. One of them is a triangular piece that they weren't even aware that they owned a couple of years ago, so this is going to bring that all in conformance into one parcel. And the other thing that they wanted to do was they own an existing single-family residential property just north of the church property. They wanted to divide that and keep the, the portion that has the existing garage on it, combine that with their other properties. It allows them to have a little bit more flexibility in terms of usage of that garage, possibly parking in the future. Um, both lots will be conforming with dimensions and size again, once the CSM is, uh, is approved. I can get my computer to work with me and show you. It won't let me. Basically, it looks like one property. Um, there is one thing that needs to be changed once, uh, before it gets submitted for recording and that is for there to be the existing utility along South Chicago Road has to be on the CSM before it is recorded. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Questions? Mike, anything? Your district?
Yeah, was there any, um, at planning, was there any concern about a piece that's going to be combined on the, on the northern end with the house and the garage from the, uh, from the neighbor on the north there? Was there any comment then?
We did not receive any neighbor comments.
Okay. I, I didn't get anything either, so. All right, thank you.
Nothing? Motion?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution number 11842 approving a certified survey map for St. Matthew's Parish for the properties at 9261, 9303, 9329 and 9348 R. South Chicago Road.
Dukenia second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 14, consideration of, um, consider a motion to concur with the recommendation of traffic and safety commission to approve the installation of advanced lane signs for southbound traffic on South 6th Street, north of East, East Drexel Avenue. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is really a typical installation that, that you have as you, as you approach signalized, uh, intersections, uh, with multiple lanes, uh, which is virtually a hundred percent the, uh, the case. Uh, probably should have went in when that intersection was improved, uh, two years back, uh, and it didn't. Uh, so, uh, the suggestion was made, uh, to have those installed, went before traffic and safety and the recommendation is to, uh, have them installed.
Right. Steve?
Mike, is the, uh, the faded arrow on the road going to be repainted and perhaps the word "only" added so that those folks who don't like to look at signs might see something on the road?
Uh, yes, that can be coordinated with, uh, with, with, uh, Streets Department and we, and we will do that.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I sat behind a car who wanted to go straight, but, you know, that's what prompted me to talk to, you know, the arrow's turning left and the car in front of him, he's not moving because soon as the light turned green, he went directly across and he was sitting on top of that faded arrow, so that's what prompted all this. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else? Motion.
Kirkowski make a motion to concur with the recommendation of the traffic and safety commission to approve the installation of, of advanced lane signs for southbound traffic